Yeah, so our two stores started not turning it on and sometimes turning it off. He didn't open the door.
The Tuesday, July 12th, 2022 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
At the start of each regular meeting, I read an invitation to our residents for open podium, which occurs on Tuesdays at these meetings prior to this formal meeting. So I'll read it now. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie city government prior to each council meeting, which are typically held the first and third Tuesday of each month. We're on a summer schedule this month. These open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55 here in the council chambers. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and the subject matter, so we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Mr. Getcho, we have, I believe, Tour de Tanka has arrived, and we have a little presentation there and then a few acceptance of donations. So I'll turn it over to you to introduce our Tour de Tanka person. Or do you just want to come forward?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As you know, Tour de Tanka is an annual event that comes through our community, and they are typically here in the summer promoting their event, which I believe is coming up. So I'd like to introduce their representative to provide the council with an overview of their event.
Thank you.
Great, welcome. If you could, when you do stand there, give your name and address, and thank you so much.
This is our swag for this year, so it's my duty to kind of water bottle.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you.
Thank you. That's cool.
Thank you. Hi, so I'm Molly Bonneman, and I am the ECFE and preschool coordinator for Minnetonka Public Schools. I've been before you before. It's nice to see you all again. Your lovely wife was my employee for a while, and so I have...
I know your name well, and she...
Hello to Kathy.
Thanks a lot. Thanks a lot of you.
Wonderful, that's very nice. Is this ready to go? Okay, I don't know if I know how to do this. There we go, okay. So this year's Tour de Tanka is Saturday, August 6th. That's always the first Saturday in August. This year, we have reduced our number of rides. We have a 16, 30, 36, 42, 71, and then we retained the century ride, which is one of our more popular rides. And I remind you, it's a ride, not a race, which is what we often tell our bikers, so that they understand that we're really out there to have a good time, to be safe, to be courteous of others on the paths and on the roads. So Tour de Tanka by the numbers, this is the 17th annual Tour de Tanka. We have 62 riders that are legacy riders, which means they've ridden in all of our rides. We have riders from 44 states. There are 295 miles to Tour de Tanka, end to end, trail and road. And over the course of 17 years, we've had 39,373 riders. So my first question for you is, it's always got a little trivia. This is one of the greatest songs you can hear played at the start of Tour de Tanka. What do you guys think it is?
Brown Eyed Girl.
You are right, nicely done. It's a good one. It's kind of fun watching the bikers take off to Brown Eyed Girl. So another trivia question is, Tour de Tanka has averaged how many riders each year since 2014?
Lisa, it's all yours.
I'd say 2943.
Okay, it's a solid guess, but as I would say on Wait, Wait, Don't Tell Me...
It starts with a three.
Oh, really? 3,000?
3,225, I'd go with. How about you, Lisa?
Yeah, yeah, that sounds good. It's fair, right? So here are some of our major sponsors this year. Some of these sponsors have been with us for a really long time. Some are new to the game. My favorite is Oink Outings. It's something that helps pork farmers to showcase what they do. It's a great name and a great logo. Shields has been a part of our programming now for a couple of years, and they are an amazing partner, and we're really grateful to have them. And we have had a lot of fun actually going to Eden Prairie Mall and filming some promo videos with them, so they're a blast. So history of Tour de Tanka riders, these are the total number of riders for each distance. We, you know, over the years have had some more rides and less rides, kind of depending on how many riders sign up. We'll oftentimes add some mileage to make the roads more spaced out and have the riders more spaced out. So our grand total since 2006 has been 35,273 riders. We have our first ever rider from Oklahoma, so we're closing in on a bingo for the United States, which is a really big deal for us. So if you know anyone in Idaho, Wyoming, Arkansas, Tennessee, Alabama, send them our way. As you can see, we hit almost every county in Minnesota. Eden Prairie is number three in our top 10 communities as of last year. We're really grateful for that. One of our rest stops is in Riley Park, which has been really fun for us. In 2022, these were the cities that we've been partnering with. So we partner with a lot of areas around to make this ride successful. And we thank you very much for your partnership. It's been a wonderful experience since the beginning. Most of what comes out of Tour de Tanka goes back into the ICA food shelf. In addition to raising funds for them, we also accept food donations throughout the event, and they usually go away with quite a bunch of canned goods and then leftovers from our rest stops. And if you've been in Tour de Tanka, how many of you have been to Tour de Tanka? Any of you? Okay, you get fatter while you ride this ride, because we feed you like crazy. And then there's pizza at the end, so it is definitely something where the rest stops are the place to be. We have live music at all of them. Riders just kind of come in, sit down, take a load off, have something good to eat. It's really wonderful, and we can't do it without our bike mechanics. And so these are the bike mechanics that have joined us this year. These are the jerseys this year. They're very, very popular, and it's great when you're out on the roads. You'll just start to notice Tour de Tanka shirts everywhere you go, which is quite lovely. If you're a rider, this is the shirt that you automatically receive. The big talk this year is the paneling. People are really in love with the Minnesota State with the bike on it and the paneling. And then if you volunteer, which we need volunteers, so if you know anyone who's interested, if you know any high schoolers trying to get volunteer hours, we definitely have space for them. And so those of us that volunteer wear this event team shirt and then help direct riders and staff the rest stops. So if you are interested, please go to our tourdetanka.org, or you can call 952-401-4157, and Mindy will help get you situated. You can see some of our fun volunteers here. Gatorade is a good job. You just kind of hang out and talk to people and stir some Gatorade. So these are all the rides and where we're going this year. There's a lot of road construction in Minnesota in the summer. I don't know if you're aware of that happening. And so we end up kind of shifting as we go along. Tim Litfin is the community ed director, and so he's in contact with local and city officials to really figure out what is the safest way to give everyone the opportunity to ride their bike. So just some fun quotes from our TDT riders. That actually is my friend Shannon on the bike with training wheels. I saw this, and I was like, hey, by the way, you're in a Tour de Tanka presentation. She's a triathlete, Ironman, so she really needs to practice on that training wheel bike. So Saturday, August 6th, if you're riding, if you want to come and spectate, or if you're willing to volunteer, we would love to have you. Are there any questions?
Counsel.
I appreciate your time each year, you guys. Thank you so much.
Molly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank Tim and the rest of all the organizers.
Thank you, guys. Please say thank you to Kathy.
Will do. All right, Mr. Getcho, let's move on to donations.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lothammer will handle the two other donation items.
Your Honor, council members, this first donation contribution is for $5,000, and it is from Comcast through the Eden Prairie Crime Fund. This is a regular occurrence on an annual basis, and we really appreciate this and what it does to help us with Safety Camp. And on behalf of Chief Sackett and Chief Gerber and many other members in our city staff that participate in this, some of them not part of their regular jobs, but also come out for a couple of days and help the kids experience some safety education and experiences. It's a really good time for them, and we really appreciate the support by Comcast and also the Crime Fund.
Councilmember Toomey, would you like to say anything more that how we always seem to have this Comcast Crime Fund connection? You are head of the Crime Fund. That one makes great sense to me.
And Comcast is a corporate partnership. Well, we have a little bit of a partnership with Comcast. They have donated for about the last five years to Safety Camp. And last year, when we didn't hold Safety Camp because of COVID, Comcast and Shields both donated sporting goods for children in need. That was a good day. They gave out pogo sticks and basketballs and stuff like that. But yeah, we've just been fortunate that Comcast has been very generous with us and with the community as well, so.
Excellent, and thank you for any role that you play as head of the Crime Fund in both working with Comcast and also with Shields. Counsel, maybe Lisa, you want to make the motion? I'm not sure.
Sure, I'll move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation of $5,000 from the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund that was donated from Comcast to go towards Safety Camp.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. All right, Mr. Lothammer.
Yes, Your Honor, this next item is from a couple of very generous members of our community, Colleen and Greg Weber. It goes towards the Flying Red Horse restoration. And just a short update on that, we are in a position this fall and over the winter to restore the sign. It is also has a place located, although it is part of the LRT project. We're hearing from the project office that next June, we will be in a position to be able to have that land come over to the city and be able to do some of the work there to put the sign in place and to have it as a part of our town center plaza. So this donation is very helpful in helping to make some of the work to restore the horse and make it structurally sound to be able to put out back into public view. So we want to thank Colleen and Greg Weber.
Great. Maybe just one more historical note of context, that this sign set right across the street from where it will be going eventually. And it's set at a gas station for decades. I don't actually know the exact year. I believe it was from the '30s and '40s. Does that sound right? But I do know that at the time, the two main highways, which were quite small in Eden Prairie, as you can imagine, in the '40s and '50s, wide or veed off there, and it was called the Y. And so this whole area, this building, a lot of people that lived in the Twin Cities that are today, you know, older, so they were here possibly in the '50s and '60s, will remember the Y. And just to let people know that it was a landmark, that once they saw the Flying Red Horse, you know, I don't know if you came over a hill or whatever, but once you saw that, you knew exactly where you were. And that was really probably the most visible landmark to say that you were in Eden Prairie, at least from everything I've heard from the old timers, that this so represented what Eden Prairie was back in the '30s and '40s. So I'm really super happy that we're able to continue working on this and very, very thankful to Colleen and Greg Weber for helping us get over the top with this. Counsel, is there a motion to accept this donation?
I'll move to adopt the resolution accepting the donation in the amount of $500 from Colleen and Greg Weber to be used towards the restoration of the Flying Red Horse.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, approval of the agenda. Is there, are there any items any one of you wish to add under Councilmember Reports this evening? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Minutes, there are two of them. The workshop held back on June 14th and also the council meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or edits to either one of them? If not, if there could be a motion to approve both of them?
I'll move to approve the following city council minutes. The council workshop held on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022, and the city council meeting held Tuesday, June 14th, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, any items to or any parts of that to question or to edit? No, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, moving to the consent calendar, we have items A through P. Councilmembers, are there any items you wish to ask questions about, possibly pull, individually vote on, or do you want to go ahead and make a motion on all of them? Anybody have concerns? Let's go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I move approval for consent calendar as written.
Okay, items A through P. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, we have two public hearings this evening. First one is Tricam Industries, Mr. Getcho.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Tricam Industries is an industrial building located at 7677 Equitable Drive. This is a 3.24 acre site located just north of Highway 212 on Equitable Drive. It's bordered by other similar industrial land uses in the area. The proponent here is proposing an addition of about 2,600 square feet to their building. And so this would require, there's a few waivers related to the project and that the applicant will explain. Also, the planning commission voted 6-0 to recommend approval to the project to the city council. The applicant is here tonight to provide an overview of their proposed improvements, and the staff and the applicant can answer any questions the council may have, and this will require a public hearing and then the approval of a first reading of an ordinance.
Come forward and welcome. Say your name and address and any other relevant information you want to share.
Good afternoon, Mayor Case and council. I'm Ryan Trader with Planforce Architects. We are here representing Tricam for the approval of a site plan and a waiver of parking. So Tricam is, as Mr. Getcho mentioned, looking to do a office expansion of about 2,600 square feet. Tricam is an Eden Prairie-based company that's long been part of your community and really wishes to remain here, and they are growing and want to expand in place. They are engineering and designers of various products, including they're most famous for their ladders, stools, and garden carts. You may have seen them in major home improvement stores under the brand Gorilla. So they are looking to expand their engineering and design aspect, which is here in Eden Prairie. Their manufacturing is not based at this location. So they're expanding their 23,000 square foot space by 2,600. In addition to the building addition, they're looking to adding a few minor improvements to the site by doing some enhanced landscape and some underwater stormwater storage. But today, we are requesting the approval of the site plan as well as a PUD waiver for the parking count. So we will get into the existing site plan. It's three and a quarter acres. What we're looking to do here is a small addition, which will be in the southwest corner. There's an existing front patio in that location. It's currently very much underutilized. They have a second patio that's on the east side of their property that they use much more often. So that was the natural fit for where to expand this on the site. It is fairly tight and built out already. So what we are looking to do is remove the patio, put the new addition in that place that will serve as the new entry to this building, which will be more centrally located for the parking field that we have available, and as well as expand some of the interior office space. This is currently zoned in I-2. We will remain in I-2, and we will maintain all setbacks and easements that are currently on the site. Here is the proposed site. We've highlighted a few things that will change for this, for this plan. The most major is highlighted in yellow, which will be the addition. On the east side of the property, we're seeing green. We're doing some regrading in that site to alleviate some water issues that during heavy rain events are coming down that hill towards our building, so we're just swaling that a little bit more. In the process, we're doing a pretty heavily landscaped area there with additional paths, so we can better utilize the existing patio that's on that side of the property. On the south side, we are redoing the accessible parking stalls to make those code compliant. Along the southwest corner in orange, we're seeing an addition of three parking stalls in that area. That is to compensate for the removal of three parking stalls up in the northwest corner. In that corner, we're looking at adding a small drive-in overhead door that will be for small parcel delivery and pickup. That's not for semi deliveries. That's happening in the truck court in the north side of the property. And then in the dark blue along the west property line is where the underwater storm retention will be. And that is, should be noted fully on this property. We do have a shared access drive along that boundary, but the water retention will be fully on our side of the property line. And here's just a quick overview on the proposed site plan. As I mentioned, all of the setbacks will be maintained as well as easements. The existing utilities are going to remain on the site, so we're not pulling new. And we are upgrading the landscaping. The existing is compliant with current ordinances, but we are going over and above and heavily landscaping both the east side and the south side to really kind of create a wonderful spot for the employees and guests at Tricam. And the second part of our request today is a waiver for parking count as part of this PUD. By ordinance, we're required to have 79 parking stalls. In talking with the, with Tricam, that just doesn't align with the needs that they have for their office space. As we've noted on here, the maximum future state of office employees would be 47, which is roughly about 20 more than that building currently would hold, and they're currently not full yet. So this has quite a while before they might get to that level, it should be noted, plus some warehouse staff. So maximum load on this building is under the existing 52 stalls on this site, and Tricam's confident that that will suit their needs moving forward. It should also be noted that they do have a hybrid work environment, so not all employees are onsite at any given time. With that, they're requesting that the parking count for the site remain the 52 that's currently on, onsite. Here is an image of the new addition, which is centered on the building. This will serve as a new entry that will more align with the style that Tricam has evolved to be. It's currently a brown brick building. We are doing a black manganese integral brick color for the addition along with some glazing, some aluminum panels, and some composite wood for accents. This is in line with the city ordinance and architectural guidelines for the area. Here are some images of the materials that are being used. Again, the brick, we are actually looking to stain some of the existing brown brick. It's a two-tone brick, brown brick today. We want to do those same colors in the same locations, or I should say, new colors in those same locations of two colors of gray to match the new brick and the branding that Tricam has evolved to. In addition to that, we've got some composite wood going in some soffit areas as well as some aluminum panels and aluminum storefront. And again, here is the proposed site plan, the floor plan for your reference, kind of seeing how we are expanding the current office space, and the elevations. So I am available for any questions.
So counsel, we will have to have a public hearing, obviously, but if you have a question of the proponent at this moment, that would be a good time to ask. And we could also, I have a couple of questions, I think, of staff, and then we can open up to the public. But councilmember Toomey, you look like you have a question.
I do have a question. So how many parking stalls are you eliminating?
We will not be eliminating any. So we are adding some office space, so it...
You just don't want...
By ordinance, it's asking us to add additional. We're looking to maintain what is there.
Okay, and do you ever foresee them going away from the hybrid and having everybody come into the office?
Hard to say. They don't have any plans of it, but who knows what the future will hold.
So I just had two questions of staff. And it's, I guess for now, you could sit, and we'll call you back up if we have a question of you.
Thank you very much.
And even after that we close the public hearing, we could call you back up if we have a question. So let me reverse my order then and just ask a parking question then, Ms. Kleema or Mr. Getcho. But so, a couple of things. One is if this building sells someday, I mean, we don't just look at what the needs are of the current occupant of the building. We think about what does it mean if this building has a future use or has a future, you know, occupant that needs more parking and doesn't meet our code. Is there any potential proof of parking, or what would happen in that circumstance? Or what do you envision if five years from now, this building, for whatever reason, does get sold and needs additional parking?
Mayor, members of the council staffs had multiple conversations with Tricam and their representatives about how additional parking could be accommodated onsite. And there were several alternatives that were provided to staff, including designating some parking spots in the truck bay on the north side of the building. At a staff level, there were concerns about conflict and interference with truck deliveries, since that parking is not needed at this point. So that's why it's not being brought forward in this proposal this evening. But that is one area that could be explored. Additionally, up in the northwest corner, it's a bit distant from the front door, but there might be some additional opportunities to add parking there if there was a future tenant that needed that as well.
And my second question is more, I guess, policy in that what is it that reaches the threshold that kicks in? This has to come before the council. Like, this is 7.8% or something increase in space, but is it that permits need to be pulled, or is it a percentage of growth? Or is a change of a front facade? I know some of those, I know from the past, do kick in. But I guess my question, kind of bigger, is what would not require something to come before the council? Could you do an addition that's 2% of your whole space and not have to come before the council?
Mayor, members of the council, there are several reasons this project is before you this evening. The facade remodel, the waiver request, the addition. To answer your, the second part of your question, there is opportunity in city code that allows for minor amendments to come straight to the council. So an addition of less than a certain percentage or a certain square footage of the building can proceed directly to council without planning commission review in order to streamline that process for those smaller types of additions. But generally speaking, any facade remodel that requires a waiver, any PUD that requires a waiver or additions meeting those thresholds would come to the council for review.
If it comes directly to the council, does that still require a public hearing then? Or is it simply consent calendar item?
Mayor, members of the council, it does require a public hearing.
And there's a threshold that kicks that in. I mean, if you put a little deck on the back and it just requires a permit, that does not. I mean, there must be level, okay. I accept that you all know that. I just kind of wanted to hear that and for our public, just to get a little sense of being educated on the process. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Should I open it up to a public hearing and then any other questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item tonight, please come forward. As the people at home can see, we have two people in the audience. One is our fire chief and the other is the proponent. So I believe then we can go ahead and close the public hearing. And then, well, if you would like, go ahead and make, well, let me ask. Well, yeah, let's close the public hearing. Just go ahead and make the motion to close the public hearing, then I'll ask you the next question.
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, counsel, any further questions or comments before I ask for the motion?
Looks like it'll be a nice addition to this building.
And I don't have a problem since there's an ability in the future to add more parking.
Yeah, okay. All right. Would somebody then please make the second half of the motion?
Adopt a resolution for planned unit development concept review on 3.24 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for planned unit development amendment with waivers on 3.24 acres and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating the staff and commission recommendations and council conditions and authorize the issuance of any land alteration permits for Tricam Industries at the request of the developer, subject to the conditions outlined in the permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Welcome again. I mean, you're here, but thanks for the reinvestment in our community.
We appreciate the extra landscaping, too.
Happy to do it. We're happy to be a part of Eden Prairie, so thank you, Mayor and council.
Excellent. Thank you.
Very much.
All right, we do have a second public hearing. It's fairly perfunctory routine. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, Mayor and council, that's exactly right. We've had several of these development projects that have come through. And following that, we need to vacate some drainage and utility easements to make way for the new project. In this case, we're talking about Blue Stem North. So that's the Greco Housing Development Project in the Golden Triangle, a stone's throw from the Future Light Rail Station on West 70th. And so the developer has requested a vacation of drainage and utility easements as dedicated on their outlot. So again, Mayor, as you said, every time you vacate easements, no matter what, you need a public hearing, no matter how much of a housekeeping item it is. And that's the action item tonight.
And just again, the educator in me, so when new developments come in, they bring into their plat the new easements. And then that goes on top of an old plat that had old easements, and so that's what we're vacating. We're not getting rid of some important use for drainage or pipes or something. We're just replacing.
Very well said. That's exactly right.
Okay. Counsel, I'm assuming this is fairly straightforward. So let's go ahead and open up for a public hearing. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on the vacation drainage and utility easement issue tonight? Seeing none, would somebody make the motion, close the public hearing, and go ahead and adopt the resolution?
Move to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution vacating drainage and utility easements.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, well, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. Payment of claims. Counsel, are there, this again is a list of all the checks, the expenditures throughout between now and the last meeting. Anyone have any items that they wish to question or learn more about? If not, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims as submitted?
I move approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Councilmember Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. Mr. Getcho, am I correct that we have nothing else on our agenda this evening?
Mayor, we have reached the end of our agenda.
All right. Counsel, anybody have anything else to say this evening before we take a motion to adjourn? All right. Would somebody move to adjourn tonight's city council meeting?
I will move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. This meeting is adjourned.